Hello, welcome to the Library Board of Trustees meeting today at September 29. I will start, I'm calling the meeting to order now at 5:01. And I will do a roll call. I have myself, Anne Kavanaugh, Mary Deshaun.
Here.
I do not think Bill Duffy is here. Eva Hamery.
Yeah.
Stan Limpert.
Here.
Earl Svenson.
Here.
And Mark Rogers, not yet. Okay, and then we have Kathleen Keenan, our director, Cindy Maza, Assistant Director, and Denise Acey, Deputy Town Manager. Okay. So, since there are so many of us on the call, we had a little bit of distractions last time. If everyone could please mute themselves when you're not talking, and then if you want to speak, like raise your hand, kind of wave, and I don't know if there's a little emoji or something, but I think that would, then we can all hear each other better.
Let me do, Anne, before you get started, let me ask a question. Everybody at all the meetings have been reading the statement that's included on the agenda from the governor.
Oh, this kind of thing?
Is that something we're supposed to do for this meeting? I don't know. Dee, what's the protocol?
I believe, yes, we need to read the entire, per the governor's order.
Okay, I'm gonna put my glasses on. Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Library Trustees will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by turning to Comcast or Verizon Channel or online at northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So. Okay, so Cindy, are there any public comments by email? Oh, I can't hear you. Cindy, you have to unmute.
Yeah.
There are no public comments.
Okay.
Nothing has come in via email, so we're all set.
No. Okay, and moving right along to the chairperson report, which is me, I just once again want to thank both Kathleen and Cindy for persevering through these difficult times during COVID-19 to reopen the library. So much progress has been made to keep both the patrons and staff safe, and you continue to push forward with all the online offerings available and adjusting the physical space. So, thank you for that. We did talk about starting to get back to some of the thing, business we had started before pre-COVID, you know, pre-COVID, so we hope to support both of you and the staff in any way we can. So, we have a full agenda, so Kathleen, I'll let you get right to your report.
Thank you, and thank you really for the support. We feel quite supported by the trustees as well as by town management. We feel very fortunate to be in North Andover and having our library here. The staffing has not changed very much, but two more staff have returned to the building. We're nearly back to full staff, we usually would be in the building for their schedule, which is part of what's helping us to start trying to increase the services that we're offering. We're maintaining all of the remote services that we had, the online services, the eBooks, things like that. We will be restarting virtual programs probably in a week or so, where we'll start having new storytimes, things like that. Curbside continues to be useful. It's a little bit slow right now, but I believe that's because many people, particularly parents, have other priorities at the moment, and we will see that pick up again. We are having our first patron visits. It's a small number, which is all right for us because it gives us time to focus on these other things as well. We have started weekend hours. We're doing a half-day on Saturdays through October. This again helps us in terms of staffing. We're looking at November 1st, expanding those weekend hours. At this time, weekend hours are supporting curbside. We're not doing any visits. That would be one of the next changes. We're doing things in increments, and that's what would be next, based on the general community health and community circumstances. It's, as everybody knows by watching the news, it's daily how we're adjusting and monitoring what's around us. We've been able to do a lot of changes to the library website, so there's more information there. The newest addition is the section on employment support, where it's passive in that we're providing information and places for people to go and to learn things. And eventually, that could turn into a more active one, when we're able to have people in the building to maybe do some training or something, or helping them with job searching in person. The building is, as always, you know, one of the things that we spend some time on. We do have some tile issues on the roof, and I'm working with Steve Foster to get those addressed before the winter gets here. We are also working with Steve on the historic steps. We have put out the call for bids for the engineering design to redo the historic steps. The two bids that came back are not either one that we're just going to automatically accept, so Steve is working with those two companies to see if there's maybe some revisions to those. If there's not, we will go back out to bid again. The good news is that our funding is established for the work when we're able to do it. This is a good time to be working on engineering designs. We wouldn't be looking for construction physically to happen until sometime next year. So, although we're behind schedule, the schedule's not impacting what we want to do there. And I did send out a note that we will be improving the lighting over the year, next year, in the library. Steve Foster has been working on green community grants and has a grant which is going to, this year we were included. He's going really around the town, building by building, and it's the library's turn to be included. We'll be replacing all of the light fixtures throughout the library for a better visibility, for better energy consumption, and removing some old technology that actually has, you know, things that when you go to throw them away, you can't throw them in the wastebasket. You have to take them someplace special. So, that's another aspect to the greening of the buildings, is that we don't have waste that's a problem to get rid of. And that's a standard with these old light fixtures, so we're not unusual in that respect. Eva, who is the Chair of the Building Subcommittee, has been working with me and with Anne, and we've been looking at the teen room. We needed to do some work on the carpet there. We have a carpet, an estimate from Atkinson Carpet, and we've been looking at paint as well to freshen up the walls. And then, of course, we're back to talking about the blinds again, that we need to do something. So, when we get to the committee reports, we can have Eva update us on that, but we've made some progress there as well. The exciting news at the Friends of the Library, I got in touch with Joanna Coltaine, who is the manager at the Stevens Estate, and said, was there any chance she could host our book sale under the tent? And so, she has agreed. It looks like the Friends will do their fall book sale. It will be three days. We're looking at October 16, 17, and 18 for them to do a book sale under the wedding marquee at the Stevens Estate. So, and our fingers crossed for both good weather and good community health for that to happen. And they're also very excited. They've been really missing having their book sales. The other thing about the building is we are getting ready to replace the shed outside. That'll probably be next spring, but it's an actual long lead time. Our shed is just, the wood is gone. It's time to get something new and sturdier that will hold all of the landscaping equipment. So, we're in good shape, both to do that physically and as well as financially. The last two things are the ARIS report, which is the annual statistics report, is due this Friday to be postmarked. Cindy has completed all the research, and she and I will be proofreading it tomorrow, and Anne's gonna come in and sign it, and we'll get that filed on time, which is always a good thing, because that's a big part of our certification process. In the next two weeks, Cindy's going to be looking at the state financial reports, where we report back to the Board of Library Commissioners on how we operated for the year, you know, where the money came from and what we spent the money on. The Board of Library Commissioners has already said that they are expecting many libraries will have special circumstances to report, because so many of us closed back as soon as March, and I'm not expecting there to be any difficulties with any of our reporting or certification, based on what I'm already seeing and hearing from the Board of Library Commissioners. They're realizing that this really is such an unusual time, that they've already started looking at how will they assess things for this past operating year in a way that still supports the libraries and will allow us to remain certified, which, while the cash is nice, the really critical part of certification is that interlibrary loan service. Those were all of my general notes, and I will turn it back to Anne, so we can do the treasurer's report and any committee reports.
Well, there we go. Okay, so next up is treasurer report. So, Earl, that's you. You're up.
I'm up. All right, so I did, I think since our last meeting, there's been two treasurer's report, but I'll comment on the most recent one. As I pointed out, I think last time we met, our account balances have bounced back from the COVID-caused drop, and we're currently at a total of all of our accounts, eight forty-five thousand, eight hundred and forty-five thousand. I know, I won't go into the details of the breakdown between Eaton Vance and Fidelity till we have the other discussion with Mark. So far this year, we've, this is the fiscal year now. We've only written five checks, summing to about just under $3,000. The interesting thing is about $2,000 of that, maybe a little more, basically has to do with expenses due to COVID, so, you know, we've got tents, we've got shields, things like that, that we've put some money into lab coats for the employees. So, I expect, you know, as we hopefully come out of COVID, we'll be, you know, having some different expenses. So, that's basically where we are with the treasurer's report to date. I don't know if anybody had any questions.
Earl, will you need to transfer any more money into the checking account for any reason?
Well, right now, our, where's our balance? Our balance is $4,000 right now, so sometime this fiscal year, yes, we're more than likely going to need to transfer money.
Okay.
And usually, we do that in $10,000 increments, but not necessarily has to happen. You know, I think we've got to keep an eye on the market. There's an election coming up, which may have an impact. You know, certainly, we don't want to be taking money out, or we did not, did not take money out of the funds during the drop during COVID, which kind of helped us, because, you know, everything bounced back, even though it had dropped significantly. And that's another discussion too, or, you know, maybe Mark has some comments on that as well.
Hi, it's Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Hi. Sorry, I'm in the car, but I'll be there. I'll be at a better place in a minute.
Okay, did you hear us talking about you?
Uh, no, I did not.
No.
Well, no, I just set you up for your later discussion about Eaton Vance versus Fidelity. I didn't set you up. I just said, we'll talk about more details of those two accounts when we get to that discussion.
Yes, indeed. All right.
So, I had actually sent out two handouts. One was the normal treasury report, and then Mark had asked me to do some return calculations, which is on a separate piece of paper. I'm done.
Question?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Kathleen, are those expenses CARES Act reimbursable to the trustees?
It's a little bit tricky, because some of, well, a lot of them were small things, so like lab coats or, you know, latex rubber gloves for the quarantine room. They were small items, and we wanted basically to have them immediately, and the trustees have been very supportive when it's things that help the staff work. So, we did not attempt to put them in as CARES Act reimbursements. The one item that is a big-ticket item and which we have put in for reimbursement are the germ barriers on the desk. So, in terms of the overall amount that Earl was talking about, the biggest single item, which certainly could be considered COVID, was the germ barriers. And basically, what happened, Steve Foster had found a company that could supply them very promptly, but they do not do any kind of business except cash or credit card. And the trustees, at my request, basically fronted us the money, so we could issue a check and give them right away. And I had worked with Lynn and identified that and said, if I have them front the money, how do I get them a reimbursement? And so, that's actually one of the items that we've just been working on, trying to get the paperwork sorted out. The paperwork has actually gone down to Town Hall this week, so we should actually be reimbursing the trustees' checking account. I think it's about maybe eleven, $1,100.
Just sort of $1,200, I believe.
Close to $1,200. So, that will actually go back into our endowment checking account, and once Lynn has done it as a reimbursement to the trustees, she'll be able to put it on the CARES claim process as well. So, it's, some of these things are a couple of steps.
Yeah, I mean, you could prompt the, it's a good question, because there are, oh, probably another close to $1,000 of expenses for items you could say, you know, and we wouldn't have bought them without COVID, obviously. So, but I don't, I don't know what the reimbursement process might be. I don't even know if the town's gonna end up getting reimbursed from wherever. So, but yeah, if somebody asked me to kind of write down, what are all the expenses that were basically caused by COVID, it would be a little, it would be more than that one single number that we agreed upfront to reimburse. You know, another, we, another way Kathleen and I had this discussion, I mean, another way to look at it is, these are expenses for the benefits of the employees, which is part of our endowment, so. That's kind of the way I looked at it, if we didn't get reimbursed.
Yeah, these were things, because many of these things are personal items, you know, and that was kind of how I looked at them, that, you know, a lab coat is worn by just one person. That item was for that staff member, whereas the germ barriers were infrastructure to the building.
Okay, well, Earl, do you have anything else? Should we just, should we wait for Mark to jump on here?
Yeah, when we get to Mark, if he needs some help explaining the returns, I can do that.
Should we move on and talk about some of the new business, like the Matasso book donation, Kathleen?
Yes, we can do that if you want to move ahead. So, the trustees have received, and it was mailed individually to each trust group, notification. I believe that the will has gone, the Millie, Mildred Matasso's will has gone into probate. What that means for the trustees and the library is that the physical books in her house were being donated to the trustees for the library. And so, the next step will be to find out from the executor, are they packing up the books to give them to us, or are they expecting us to come and get the books? I will say that Cindy and I visited, the books are literally still on the shelves in her home. The last, we heard that everything is still intact in the house, that we were able to visit the house, and the majority of books are not books that would go into the library collection. And most of the books probably are a basic item that would go into a Friends book sale. There are some items that are a bit more special, and the Friends often would put those into a specialty auction. So, that's sort of our first rough estimate of what that is going to look like. At the moment, we're, of course, not accepting physical donations in the building, so that'll be one of the things, one of the steps for us to sort out, when the books get packed up, you know, where are they going, and what are we doing with them?
Kathleen, are there, are there any of those books that would go, the library would want to keep?
I did not see anything in my looking through the shelves.
Thank you.
Do you think that her intention was that she wanted us to, or do you think that being able to sell some of the special things, so that when we can do what we want with the money is positive, or?
Well, my understanding is, once a gift is given to the town, it's the town's property, and it's up to them what they do with it. And so, unless people give a specific caveat to a donation that puts a restriction on it, so in the instance where people give us funds, you know, we want this to be used for, you know, repairing the building or something like that. My first look at the will was that the books were donated, and there were not specific stipulations. I will say that if people want to donate something to the library with a specific restriction, we normally do not accept those donations for physical books. And we've had people who donated, want to donate a tree, for instance, inside the building, and we've said, we can't, we can't take the tree. We can't guarantee we're gonna keep it alive, or, you know, we've had people who wanted the tree to be in a certain spot inside the building, and we're like, we're not able to accept a gift that puts handcuffs on us, basically. It's different when people donate funds that are to be used for purposes that make sense, but physical objects with limitations, you know. I've got a painting I'd like to always hang in the rotunda. We typically, and I say we, I mean libraries in general, do not accept that, because it's hard to honor those commitments decades into the future, and we believe our libraries and our buildings will be here decades into the future.
Can I speak for a moment? Because I'm happy to say that Millie was a friend of mine. She was a teacher for both Anne and I, but I, Millie showed me all her books, and she was very, she enjoyed her friendship with Robert B. Parker, and I think she probably would be happy if those books were being sold. I would imagine those might be some of the books that are being sold, and she'd be happy that someone appreciated the fact that there was a personal connection. So, I hope that she would be happy that we were going to do some, be able to do something with the funds.
Kathleen, is there anything we trustees can do to help you dispositioning these books in some way, like sort them, or organize them, or move them, or any help we can give you?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer yet. When we find out, you know, for instance, is there a specific date he needs them out, to be out of the house? My impression is that the house will eventually be sold, so he hasn't been in touch beyond that one letter that came to the trustees yet, so we need to find out from him. Are there specific things that he has in place? Like, does he have a date they need to be gone? Is he planning on having someone come in and pack up the entire house, in which case they would pack the books up? Or does he want us to come and, you know, look at the books and pack them up? In some ways, it would be to our advantage to see the books before they're packed up, because then we would, like you say, sort and pack, and some go to the right and some go to the left, and mostly, they don't come to the library at all, which, right now, in terms of COVID, is, you know, helpful to us, to not be bringing a lot more things into the building. We're just, we're very tight on space.
Yeah, we also, we also have access to things like pickup trucks and much younger people who are much more able to lift boxes of books than either any of us or the Friends, for that matter, so that's another advantage that we might offer too.
Stan, I wasn't aware of that, Stan.
The request for my minivan.
Eva, is that something you would be interested in, like going and looking, since you were?
I'm more than happy, because, yes, and I know exactly where she put those Robert B. Parker books. I've been in her house a number of times, and yeah, so I would be more than happy to assist with that.
Okay, well, we'll coordinate that afterwards, then.
Okay.
Okay, um, oh, the holiday wreath.
That's me, too. The wreath orders will begin going in on Thursday, October 1st. The cost of the wreaths this year, I think, Kathleen, I think I told you, it went up to $70. Oh, I have, I have an envelope here. Hold on, I can tell you exactly. I was hoping, 75. I would love to be able to hand-deliver a check to Rosemary Smedele in the next, well, October 1st, so that we get a good position for our wreath this year. So, may I make a motion to, to spend $75 for a holiday wreath to be purchased from the North Andover Holiday Decorating Committee?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
We probably need to do a roll call.
Oh, all right, I forgot about the roll call. Okay, Stan, I'll just go in order that you are on screen. Okay, all right, Earl?
Yes.
Mary? Mary, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Oh, okay, Eva?
Yes, yes.
And I am also in favor. We did not, but now we do. Oh, and who's this?
Mark.
Okay, Mark. Okay.
If it's possible, I'd love to come by the library and pick up the, whenever it's ready.
Okay, Eva, we can, we'll coordinate that afterwards.
Terrific. Thank you.
I'll be happy, I'll be happy to come by tomorrow and sign it.
Thanks, Earl.
Okay, I'm going to sign the ARIS report. Do you want me to sign it? Can I sign it? Yeah, I'm on the thing.
Yes.
Unless you, so if I get there at like 4:30 and it's not signed yet, Earl, I'll sign it. So, do we want to jump back to? Oh, wait, one more thing about the wreath. What do we consider a good location? Eva, you're muted.
As close as we can get to the library, but you know what, sometimes those aren't the best places. So, last year, we were very close to First and Main, or we were on that corner, and that's a visible corner, so I think.
Busy downtown, yeah.
Busy downtown. I don't want to be on High Street, for example. Nothing against High Street, if you're listening, but we'd like some visibility, so I'll talk to Rosemary about it. I think she did a good job for us last year, and this year, we're in queue quickly, so maybe we'll get a better spot.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Yeah. Anne, there is one more thing that actually has timing on it. Earl, did you want to talk about the Rico Popier renewal?
So Kathleen approached me a couple of weeks ago about renewing or basically renewing the copier contract. It would be a new copier. And I just wanted to get, I, I wanted to bring it before the full board to, in case there are any questions about what we're doing. It just, the, the timing is, you know, we don't have that many people going into the library. But on the other hand, you know, we've got to look ahead to the future. And so I was also asking questions about what capabilities such advice would, would need, you know, for the next three years beyond just making a paper copy. So I think Kathleen, you assured me, I think that it, it does, you can send a scan to email. I think you can send a scan to thumb drive. But I also didn't know whether there were other features.
Is it a color, Earl, is it a color copier?
I, that I don't know.
So this is, this is the Rico copier and the trustees basically support in, in the sense that you front the money for the rental of the copier that's used by the public. So it's attached to the public computers. So it is black and white copy. It is color copy. You can scan to a flash drive. There are settings to set it up to scan to email. We found in the previous model that there were some issues with that feature, so we didn't have it turned on. The Rico copier, we're able to get a very good price on this lease. It's a three-year lease machine, so we don't buy it. Because we're working with the same company that supplies the copiers for the town, they let us piggyback on the time, the town contract prices and things like that. This contract is for three years. If for some reason we think we just want to think about it some more, I think an option is to just renew, tell them we want a one-year contract and use that time to look for something else. One of the advantages to us is that it's the same copier model that we have for the staff. So one of the things that's always helpful is if staff have to be supporting equipment, the equipment is, if not exactly the same, it's pretty similar. So that if you've ever worked someplace as an IT support, the worst thing is having five different printers because everyone has a different way of working and breaking. So that's been an advantage for us for the staff. So typically they have been giving us three-year contracts, but you certainly can say that this year you'd like a one-year contract. The one caveat with it right now is that the current contract for three years offers that the first three months of the three years will be free, but they do require us to have signed it by tomorrow. Our, our lead time has been disappearing. So if we don't sign it by tomorrow, we will still get the same monthly lease cost, we just won't get the three months free service.
Well, I would imagine that we would have people coming into the library by January more frequently, I would hope. So why, you know, when would, I don't know, I'm trying to, trying to think about what would the downside be to signing now? Because you're not going to get the three, three months. So you're going to need to sign the contract at some point, right?
Well, we, we need to sign something now. We can ask for a shorter contract, but we need to sign something now. We do have, you know, we have somebody scheduled tomorrow to come in to use the computer and to print. So we can't not have a machine. We would have to go to Plan B if we don't renew this one, at least for a year.
Kathleen, how is, what is the monthly fee or how does it, is it bill per page or?
We have a, we have a service agreement, so it, well, it's a lease and it, which includes service agreement. So the monthly cost is $134.14. That's the lease of the machine and some basic preventative maintenance. And then we have a specific number of copies that we make that come in at a certain price, which I don't remember off the top of my head. And then there is overage costs. So if we go over a certain number, there's the cost for the overage. We have not really gone very often, I think, into the overage on that public machine. That we, it's, the ratios of what we view seem to have been pretty consistent for us. That there's not a lot of extra cost beyond the monthly lease fee.
The checking account that would, that pays for this currently has $10,000 in it. And I, I looked back a year and it had $11,000. So I mean, we're, it's more or less self-financed because I don't think we've put any money into this checking account.
Right. It really what, I think that the better way to talk about it is that the trustees ceded the money many years ago. And we've talked about should we drop the price for black and white copies and color copies? Because right now, you know, the, the money that we collect for copies has built up. There is a separate checking account for this copier fund money. It is separate from the endowment checking fund. So it's very clear which funds which. And we could lower the price of copies, but then at some point, if we use up what we have there in a reserve, then we'd put the price back up again.
Kathleen, I, may I ask a question? Sorry, sorry about that, Earl. I might have been snoozing here, but is, what's the, is there an advantage to signing a three-year contract? And can you also tell me how old the copier is? Because if we want to update the copier, we'd be better off with a shorter maintenance contract on.
The, the way that Rico operates is when we sign a new lease, they bring in the latest model machine. So with this lease, they will be bringing in a newer model machine. The current machine presumably is three years old. That, that's what the last contract was. So it gets us upgraded equipment each time we renew the contract. When the new equipment comes in, they send in the service person who also was supposed to give us a little bit of training on new features.
Would, if, if you sign a three-year maintenance agreement, does that lock us in for the rate for three years?
I believe so.
And does that include toner or supplies at all? Or do that separately?
Yeah, separately.
Does that, of course, toner costs just keep going up and up? And do you think Kathleen, that you could get the scanner function, scan to email function turned on with a newer machine and try it out again? Because I think that's something that people are becoming more and more used to, scan to email.
Yeah. Our experience with it last time, it's really not a machine issue. It was a software issue. So we had, we had it turned on and the first person who scanned to his email, it went there. And every person who came after him also scaled, scanned their first person's email. So the machine was not doing a shutdown process on the email. And I'll, I'll be honest, it's a more sophisticated set of commands for the patron on the machine. And so once we saw that people were mailing documents to somebody that they didn't realize, we felt it was a more secure feature to have them continue to use a flash drive and then go use that. Now, it's one of those, I'm hoping the software function maybe has been improved, but that's.
I think we should find that out before we enter the new agreement because I, I think Ava's got a good point. Going forward, people are going to want to email it. And so we should know, you know, we should find out for this new, new copier, if we're going to be able to allow patrons to, to use email. Because people aren't going to have a, they're going to come in and not have a flash drive.
Yeah. And in these days, there's, well, companies often encrypt your flash drive as soon as you put it into your equipment. And that, you know, you don't, you don't have a flash drive all the time with, that you can actually use, so.
And there are security issues with plugging in flash drives as well. But yeah, I think we really should find out. It shouldn't take long to find out whether this has the capability of doing email. And if not, I think we should find one that does.
Now Rico's are, Rico's a good company, I have to say. I have a lot of experience with copiers and they're, they're good.
Yeah, and I've done email from Rico copiers. I mean, it isn't easy because you got to type in your email, but you know, maybe, maybe they've got a, an easier way to do it.
Can you email copies to be printed before you get there?
So we'd have had it set up in the past so that you could do remote printing.
Right.
So we haven't had that function on, of course, while we were shut for COVID because people would send print jobs and they couldn't get in to get them.
Not even for curbside?
Well, it's a little bit tricky. So part of the, the problem is that when people send it in for remote printing, they enter the building and they put the cash in the machine. And at the moment, we are not having people hand us cash in the building. So they could come to curbside and hand us the money, but we'd have to come inside the building and put the money in the machine. The machine.
Yeah, it's not worth it.
On a, on a coin operated machine.
Always go to Staples. Sorry.
Well, you know, I've honestly, I've said it to people that, you know, who are, you know, making an appointment to come in for two minutes to photocopy, that unless there's a particular reason, they might find that it's just more convenient to, you know, go try both Staples one. And I think the downtown hardware store actually has a photocopier that you can use as well.
Yeah.
Because it, it seems crazy to make a, an appointment at the library to come in for five minutes to photocopy when there could be a much easier way for them to, to do that. So.
Right.
Well, the other thing too is people with cell phones can, you know, pretty easily take a picture of a page. So you know, as more and more people get better cell phones, that's going to be kind of cross elastic with this.
Kathleen, can people use, can people use credit cards to make copies?
No. It's strictly a cash machine, so it's coin or paper bills. It's one of those things that we would like to work towards, but it's a little complicated. We, we'd also like to be able to have people to use credit cards and debit cards to pay for other things at the library, like a lost book or something. But that would, that requires us getting tied into the town finance system. And we are actually on a schedule pre-COVID. Mark, not Mark, no. No. Chris? McClure, yes. Where did I get Mark from? Chris McClure, I'm looking at Mark. I messed myself up. Chris McClure had a multi-stage plan for through all the town buildings installing swipe payment options. The library, because we collect so very little money compared to, let's say, the school district or the youth center was in the last tier to be automated with card swiping capability. So we, we are on the plan. We, you know, we weren't close to doing it yet, but, but he had us on the list.
Is this Bill Duffy, this phone number down the bottom? I'm just curious.
That ends nine two?
Yeah.
It might be because the cable station man, his operator.
603.
Yeah, yeah, his end eight, eight five, so.
I think that is the cable guy, nine two.
Oh, maybe, maybe at the cable station. Okay, well anyways, that doesn't matter. Should we, so is this something that can wait until we have all these answers, these questions answered for, till next meeting? Or does it have to be done sooner than that?
I think we also should ask whether they have, they accept, things like whether they have copiers that accept Apple Pay or some other kind of payment method. Because, you know, it's very typical as a sales technique to say, you've got one day to make this decision, now you can't shop around, right? Bypass on that or sign a one-year agreement and then start looking for something that, that I think our patrons would find even more useful.
By the way, in Kathleen's defense, it was me that held this up because when she approached me a couple of weeks ago, I, I wanted to have this discussion and obviously couldn't until we got to the, to the trustee meeting. But I think the points, you know, I think the points that have been made are good ones.
So when is the contract actually up?
It's already expired.
Oh.
And how many people have asked for, how many copies have we made in the last month?
Well, it doesn't matter how many, as soon as one person needs it. I mean, we can advertise that we no longer have the ability for patrons to print. That's what it would mean if we don't do something with the copier. I will speak to the copier representative tomorrow. She's very nice to work, but she's been very understanding about this, and say that we have some questions. Is there a problem with us taking a little more time before making a decision? And if she says she really needs something, then I'll ask for a one-year agreement and that, you know, one year will go by quickly. In terms of the types of payment methods, the payment methods are not attached to the machine. They come from a separate piece of equipment from a separate company. So we can ask, do they have, do they work compatibly with these other companies? Copying is very crazy.
The air print function?
Say that again?
Does the current printer or, or copier printer accept the Apple or the iPhone air print function?
I don't know. I haven't ever seen anybody do that.
We really should ask because that's a very popular feature among home printers. And it's, and it's now really everywhere and there's an Android print that's very similar. And I think that's really what we should be looking at. If they don't, if they don't have that, we should really shop around. So if it takes us a year to look for another, another vendor that can do that kind of stuff, I think we should.
So then we do a short, just one year, and then we look for all the functionality we want.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, so given that, given there aren't a whole lot of people in there and all of that, should we just vote to renew it for a year and then be ready a year from now?
And I, I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea.
And then we can definitely have all our questions answered because this may not even be done in a month, figuring all this out.
Right.
Right.
And since it's not like dire right now because of COVID and not a lot of people in there printing, then maybe we do take our time and figure it out.
And it would be great next fall to be able to offer, you know, say, hey, school's back in session. We've got this new functionality with the copier. That would be really great.
It'd be, yeah, true. Okay, so someone.
So I would, I would move to sign a one-year lease for our copier for the public use.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in fa, oh, I'll do the roll call. I'm in favor. Mary? Oh, okay. Eva?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Okay. Good. All right. So should we get back to the investment with Mark?
Yeah, we had, we had talked in our last meeting briefly about the idea of looking at, back at the, the appropriateness of staying with Eaton Vance or shifting all of our funds in one direction or another. And so one of the things that, that Earl was very kind in doing was to take a look at a five-year, a five-year, well, yeah, five-year essentially comparison between the two investments. And he even took into consideration the money that gets withdrawn, both for fees from Eaton Vance, investment fees, and just the, the regular annual withdrawals that we do to fund the checking account out of the fidelity account. And what he found really was that the percent earnings in the fidelity account, which has no other, is double that over five years, that of the Eaton Vance. And so the Eaton Vance is wildly diversified, but just not performing the way that the fidelity funds are performing. And I think we've, we've, one of the things that we were concerned about was that the Eaton Vance might be better in bad times and good times. That's not the case. We also thought maybe it's better in good times and bad times. That's not the case. It is patently clear that the investments that we have in fidelity are significantly better over time than the ones in Eaton Vance. And therefore, I would, you know, I would like to put a motion on the table that we collapse the, the end of life, the Eaton Vance investment and move those funds into the fidelity investment proportionally in the way that I had outlined. in the way that I had outlined in a, in a prior analysis, which, which matched fund, fund type to fund type. Both, you know, so international fund to international fund, bond fund to bond fund, stock fund to stock fund. So that was in motion so we can have a discussion.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Just a discussion on, so that, what I did was calculate the returns for different periods. Because, and people that look at mutual funds closely kind of know this, you can, you can create a different return depending on the period of time you pick. And so I initially started with our fiscal year as the, the time. By the way, the, the start time was when the money was moved from a joint fidelity, you know, it was all at fidelity at one time. And in May, I believe, of 2015, we pushed it to a significant amount, probably two-thirds of it went to Eaton Vance and the remainder stayed with fidelity. And, you know, the return, like I, you, you had said it's double, but you know, I'm, I'm a little more closer to the numbers and I'm a numbers guy, so I gotta be careful. But fidelity was like 5.7 and Eaton Vance was 2.9. So then I looked at a calendar year, so I shifted the analysis. So, you know, sometimes things happen at the end of the year that make things look better. And the comparison was Eaton Vance around six and fidelity around eight. And then I shifted it another one to more or less bring it up to date to September. So the year that I looked at went from October to September, the following September. And there Eaton Vance was 2.8 and fidelity was 5.4. But as you probably know, you're doing investing, the total return, you know, that's just an average annual return. So the average annual return, if I use the fiscal year numbers, for fidelity is 5.7 and for Eaton Vance, it's been 2.8, 2.9, and that's an average that was calculated over five years. But the total return, as you point out, is twice, is, you know, the difference is twice for that fiscal year. The total return for Eaton Vance was roughly 15% and for fidelity, it was 32. So you, you mentioned one other thing I wanted to be clear on. So we take money out of the fidelity part, not Eaton Vance. So I added that amount each year that we pulled out $10,000. That's $10,000 we made. That should go towards making the return look better. Since we got the money, we actually spent it, but, you know, as an investment, fidelity returned that amount of money to us. On the Eaton Vance side, I think what's hurting them, making their returns not as good, is the fact that we pay them roughly $700 to $900 a quarter. And those are not, you know, those don't get back, added back in. They detract from the return that Eaton Vance is doing. So I just wanted to be clear so everybody kind of, you know, knows the, the parts of the calculations that were done and what, what impacts. So we do pay fidelity some fees, but it's relatively, you know, they're kind of wrapped in their mutual funds and we don't see them. But we do pay fidelity some amount of money to manage our accounts, but it's probably, well, it is significantly less than the numbers we pay Eaton Vance. Well, I'll be quiet.
The net, as you say, is over five years, is really pretty dramatic. And, and, and all the reasons that I've heard in the past for doing, for, for, for leaving the money in Eaton Vance haven't come to pass. They aren't, they aren't actually, those assumptions were incorrect. And so I think we're, we're doing better, we would do better for our patrons to shift the funds from Eaton Vance to fidelity in like-for-like that we discussed.
Well, I, you know, I, the way I look at it, at it is the COVID drop that we had earlier this annual year, calendar year, that was one argument I think people used to use Eaton Vance, to, to put the money with Eaton Vance, that they would, you know, kind of help us through a down market, but it really didn't come out that way.
Well, but the Eaton Vance money, that isn't really actively managed, is it? Isn't it kind of passive and they just kind of, or are they doing trades?
They're both are passive. They only trade when they need to, to, to pay their own fees. They do sell.
So really, it's, yeah, that's not, I mean, paying all those fees would be one thing if they were like managing it and, you know.
Well, in any case, the fees would be worth it if they made more than the fees, right?
Exactly, yeah.
No, that's not the, that's not the.
So that's a no-brainer really. I mean, I know they talked about, Bob Quinn talked about them being more active for more fees. You know, if we paid them like 1%, sort of half percent or whatever it is that we're paying them. But given that fidelity is doing so well, I'm not so sure that's even worth it. In fact, I don't think it is. So. How do we want to proceed then?
All the motions on the floor.
Okay.
We have, we have a motion in a second, so.
And we discussed it. Okay, we ready to vote?
Can we hear the motion again? Can Cindy read us the motion?
Cindy? Oh, you're muted.
Muted.
No, she's, she lost her sound, I think.
She lost her sound? Oh dear.
Oh, then she can't.
But I can, I can, I can.
Why don't you just say the motion again?
Okay.
This is to, is to liquidate the Eaton Vance funds and transfer those funds to the fidelity account in like-for-like, the way that I had put in, I had put in an analysis earlier on in the year, I think, that showed the comparisons between like-for-like funds. So in that vein, we would move funds, international funds to international funds, bond funds to bond funds, stock funds to like-stock funds. So that's the motion.
Okay. And Stan, you seconded it?
That's the one, right, yeah.
I hear a big humming.
Be steady.
Is everybody else?
Yeah, no, we're good.
Okay, well, well, let's vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Who seconded it?
I did. I did second.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, okay. Stan, who's gonna go?
Yes.
Order of, in the screen.
Yes.
Yes.
Mary? Mary?
Yes.
Okay, it's a delay. Eva?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mark?
Sorry about that.
And me, yes.
And Ann, by the way, that nine-two number, Bill Duffy's phone number does end with nine-two.
Oh.
So.
Well, Bill, if you're there and you can unmute yourself somehow. If not, hello. I think it's star six for Google meets to unmute yourself via phone. Oh, star six on your phone, Bill. If you hit that, maybe.
Is that the word?
Yes.
Star six?
Hello, yay.
Yeah, good. Okay, yeah. Well, yeah, I'm okay with both this one and the earlier one, the, the one on the, on the copier.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Good to hear from you.
It's been a very robust discussions.
Did you want to add any comment to this Eaton Vance thing?
Nope.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. All right.
Work with Earl, do the calculations and get in contact with, with Eaton Vance to do the transfer.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah, we may, we may want to think about the best way to do the transfer too, Mark.
Yeah.
We can talk about that later.
Yeah, I can also call our fidelity rep to get his ideas about how, how best to do that.
My thoughts exactly.
Okay, great. Do we have anything else? Oh, review the actions and next, well, are we done with that? Did you want to add anything else, Mark or Earl?
All set. I got, I got my marks.
Thank you for that, looking into that and coming up with those numbers. That makes it pretty clear. Okay, um. Cindy?
Yes.
Do we have to?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
It was just to be, to review where we are and the actions and the motions that have been made in this meeting. And one of the motions made by Eva to move forward with the wreath, having the check for the wreath. The, there was sort of an action that Eva would work with Ann to assist with review of Millie Matasso's books. Let me see, Mark made the motion about Eaton Vance collapsing or shifting the funds, liquidating Eaton Vance and putting it into our fidelity account. And then there was the one-year lease of the, so there was also a motion made by Stan, seconded by Eva. Everybody agreed that we would sign a one-year lease for the copy. But that would give, get the copier, or we would get a new copier, but we would have to take the next year to figure out what we need for capabilities. And when it becomes ready to, we'll make sure all of our research is done so we know what we need. I believe those are all the actions and all the motions.
Okay. Yes.
Cindy, Cindy, did you mention about the wreath and the check?
Yes, that's what I said. Yep, I did. I said, I mentioned that maybe not clearly.
Eva?
We're gonna cut the check tomorrow, try to have that done tomorrow. And so Eva could take that check and get the wreath lined up early so we can get it in a very visible place.
Eva?
Yes.
Did you have to say something?
If we're winding up, I did have one thing for the building committee that I wanted to mention. Are we winding up?
Yes.
Okay, so Kathleen, forgive me, I don't think you mentioned this, but I wanted everyone to know, even though we're not currently using the historic doors, but if you happen to walk the front steps and see the finish on our historic doors, which I will remind everyone, because some of you might not know, that we had completely refinished in 2014. The finish is really gotten beaten up by the weather. So this is something that Kathleen and I have on our plate to address and find the right person to do the work, to refinish the doors. So you'll be hearing more about it, but I just wanted you to know because I think Stan might have seen it and Kathleen and I, Kathleen showed me and I said, wow, I, you know, even in the, since I use the front door, it really has deteriorated. So we need to do something about that.
Eva, Eva, do you think this time the doors can be refinished in place?
Yes, well, I think they don't need refinishing this time because last time we needed to get parts of it, like the astral, which is a term I now know about doors, we had to send those doors out to a specialist. And unfortunately, he has retired. But honestly, it's just a refinish, it's not, or a replacement or a re.
Re-sealing.
Re-sealing of the door, exactly. Yeah, the re-sealing of the door, not a repair to the door. So I can ship it in place. We just need to find the right person to do the work. And, and I can actually give you an update. I heard that there is a carpenter, a painting firm that the town uses for other buildings. And trying, trying to get in touch with the building. My emails this morning, I have an appointment this weekend tomorrow to look at the doors to see what the correct dimensions are for the type of material. The restoration carpenter who did the doors for us, at the time, said that the doors, and I'll use the term, you know, probably a, maybe a, of the door, that it should be resealed every three to four years because of that exposure to the building. That the door will really, if there aren't, there aren't products that are going to last forever, but this is a permanent focus on it that we should be looking at. And the thing is, this is the right carpet to be in because we have a less, we're living right now. So I'm, I'm hoping that you will have good news when we talk about that. But the one other thing about the building is that there's not a mention about the exposure to the carpet or the tear.
Yeah, that was the next thing I had. Yeah, and Kathleen and I were sort of joking about this, but I think what we need to do is in every election year, so really every four years, we need to take a look at this. So that will be our trigger. It's the election year. Okay, we need to look at, and order to refinish the doors. So, so as far as the tear room goes, we have some pricing. We have not yet selected the field carpet tile that we want to put in the tear room, but we do have some pricing. And the price for the, the supplies for the carpet would be in a range between $3,000 and $5,000 depending on what we choose. And the installation cost is short of $2,000. We think we can get this done like in a one or two-day event, you know, so the closing of the tear room for one or two days. So Kathleen and I, hopefully for our next meeting, will come to you with, with selection that we think is the right match. Additionally, we're putting in carpet and I know Ann has seen it and liked it. We're talking about structural carpet to make the transition from the computer area into the tear room. And that is a carpet that sort of matches the walk-off mat that is at the historic entrance when you walk in. So we think it'll be a nice, it'll tie together nicely. And so stay tuned, I'll show you next time what we're thinking about. Okay, that's it for me.
How are we paying for the carpet? Is that?
Kathleen, I can let you, you can talk about that.
This is something that the trustees have said that maybe we'd be happy to do this with an hour and a half. It's important, things inside the building, like decoration and, you know, dressing up. Our standing agreement with Andrew Miller, who's with the town, we have to be doing in terms of everything infrastructure. So that there's, you know, work to cover things like the roof or if we needed to reinforce the bricks. But the trustees were able to take the building and reconcile. And the town has already tested, we've done, that it's tested specifically against the building. Certainly, the new roof has, and a dream, living with no bucket of hope that the building is going to fall. We've had wonderful support over the years from the community transportation grant. So I, I feel like it's suitable for us to ask the trustees to support to begin through what, whether it's some new product or or some new carpet. That we do get very good support for it, even if it's not too much, which in a, is much more expensive to take it out.
So in addition to the carpet, in the tear room, we're also looking to do some painting. In, in the, behind the shelves, there's painted walls, so we would like to update the paint color and also take a look at changing out the window blinds at the same time. That we're, we're sort of going to refresh that room. And Kathleen and I have talked about the window blinds as part of a bigger project. I don't think we've come up with our solution yet, but we might decide that we'd like to advise everyone that we replace only the window blinds in the tear room first and then progress beyond the tear room at a later date.
Eva?
Can we, before you continue, can we have, my computer's having a difficult time hearing people talk. There's a lot of background noise. Can we all go back on mute again? Thank you.
And does Bill know how to go on mute? Maybe Dee can tell us from a phone. I don't know if Bill has gone back to mute, but.
I think it's star six again.
Star six again, okay, that's good.
Okay, well, if you're, I, I'll stay on Eva, I'll keep listening Eva if you lose me, okay? Here we go.
Okay, star six. Okay.
Perfect.
So Earl, do you need me to repeat anything? I know we had trouble hearing Kathleen. I know we had trouble hearing Kathleen.
Eva, let me just ask you a question. If we do some of the painting, some of that work, will it brighten up that room at all? That room seems, has always seemed very dark to me, particularly for a tear room, will that help with that, do you think?
Yes, because I think one of the things we're looking to do is, so do you know, the surface I'm talking about is in the bookshelves, they're little, you know, little alcoves. So the back wall is painted, right now it's painted like a maroney color, I think, Kathleen, correct me if I'm wrong. But we'd like to lighten it up and perhaps go with a shade of gray, similar to what we've done downstairs in, at the new, at the main entrance downstairs. We used something called like owl gray or something like that, which is a nice light color. So we're thinking that's the color we want to incorporate everywhere, so that might be the right choice or some tone that's similar. You know, maybe we don't want to go with gray, maybe we want to go, depending on what carpet we choose, but something a little lighter. Because we, I agree with you certainly, that that room is kind of dark. So we'll keep that in mind also with our carpet choice, but of course, when you choose a carpet such, like, similar to the carpet we have today, which is, I'm not even sure how old, because I wasn't even a trustee back when that, that was put down. But it is worn beautifully, so we want to look for something like that, you can't go too light in the carpet because it shows dirt. So, anyway, I talked enough.
The, the other thing, my other question was, I know in the past, and I think this was just almost when I was becoming, coming on the, the board, that we'd use some of our state aid money for some remodeling or refurbishment, I don't know, maybe the, the changing table for the babies or something, I forget. Is this also an area where we could use some, some state aid money to sort of add to the, the funds to do more like the blinds or something?
So I would defer to Kathleen on the use of the state aid money, because that's her.
Yeah? Yes, I was just sending a note.
Yes, I saw, okay. Current carpet, our current carpet was installed in 2007, so that shows you how well it's worn.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate with the carpet, we got quite a good supply of carpet tiles and when there was a problem, one was lifted. And so the, the carpet has worn really very well. It actually went down in October of 2007, right before the 100th anniversary celebration, which is how I can remember the date. We have used some state money, state aid money for things in the building. We, we each year kind of estimate what we might use some of that money for and that, so we can certainly look at that. We have been basically squirreling that away so that we had recourse in a rainy day. And so that may be part of why, you know, when we look at it right now, in the past, we were thinking to use it, because things have been going so well. But, you know, the COVID year may cause us, we think that we will be using the state aid money to replace the shed outside. We have a good price from the Reed's Berry Shed Company, so that's one thing that, you know, we would do for sure. Sometimes we've used it, like if we needed a new snow blower or something like that, but we've been very conservative with that, with that money. So we're able to afford things like redoing the baby, making the baby changing room, for instance. And many of those changes that we've done, because our custodian does the labor, the cost has been quite low, it's really been materials more than anything.
Stan, to your point, we might want to have somebody take a look at the lighting in that room.
Is that part, Kathleen, is that part of the energy, the, the project that Steve is doing?
Yes, the LED refitting is the entire building, it will be all the lighting everywhere.
Yeah, so that, because I'm thinking we're gonna paint behind the books that are in the bookcase. I'm not sure that's gonna get the brightness that Stan's looking for.
Well, you know, I do, I do think another thing that we will be looking at in the future that will help too, is if we're replacing the tables. And now that's not at the top of our list by any stretch of the imagination, but if we replace the tables and we can replace it with a top that's a little, it's not as dark too, that will help to lighten things up.
So when we do the lighting, maybe we keep that in mind, that we need to have more light in there. And, I mean, that's.
As your treasurer, I just had one other question, if trustees are gonna fund the carpets, about when do you expect that expense to occur?
Um, well, maybe not for a few months. Immediately, I think it, it could be a couple of months out, so that we would have time to react.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll probably have to do a transfer by then.
Yeah, I think what we also want to happen first is we want the paint, the painting to be done. And so that's why I wanted to defer to Kathleen, because Rick is gonna do the painting, so it'll have to fit into his schedule.
Do you think there are many carpet tiles in that room that we could save?
Yes.
To use as replacements?
That was the driver for this whole project, so.
So will Rick pick those up before he paints?
Well, we.
Something he would do with the carpet people?
Kathleen and I talked about it and that, there's an $1,800 charge for the labor, but putting down the carpet and that includes taking up the carpet. So the amount of work that Rick would have to do to take up the carpet to save a small amount of money, we don't think is worthwhile. Better to let the professionals take up the, the carpet and, and deal with it in such a way that we can reuse it.
So have they agreed to that, that they can do that?
That's part of their.
Okay.
Yeah, they understand what's driving this project and the reuse of those tiles is, is what it is, so.
Okay, good. Is that it for you, Eva?
I think so.
Sorry that I kind of bypassed you there, we were jumping around. Okay, any other committee business anybody wants to talk about? I didn't miss anything else? Okay, um. So do we want to talk about meeting dates, Kathleen?
So, we have confirmed the October 27th meeting date as the next meeting date. That's confirmed with the cable station, so that we are locked in to be able to do this virtual meeting again as a broadcast. One of the things that I'm working on now is a, an actual calendar that I will send out and show what I would propose for dates for the next several months. One of the things we need to do is pick dates and try to get them locked in on the cable station broadcast schedule. Because everybody is still meeting remotely, it is difficult to sometimes get a date. So I thought the easiest thing to do would be to make a calendar and send it around so people could look at it and then come back and let me know if, for some reason, we're not gonna make quorum on those dates. So that would be coming out probably in the next week or so and that, but we're in good shape because we have a confirmed meeting for October 27th, so.
Okay, that sounds good.
We can do this again.
Yes, okay, so is that it, everybody? I know it's getting late. Motion, should we adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in fa, oh, okay, I'm in favor, Ann's in favor, Stan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Oops, Earl?
Earl said yes.
Eva?
Yes.
Mary? She has a little delay there, I don't know why.
Yes.
Okay, and Bill, we assume you say yes? Yeah, we heard you, thanks. Bill? Yes, no. I'm sure Bill will say yes, so, meeting adjourned then.